Go ahead.
Lord, assist with thy Holy Spirit of council all of those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibility. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, civil liberties, justice, moral.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves? Mr. Corvo?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadenay?
Here.
Mr. Biergard?
Here. Open form pursuant to round general law 4246-6D. Madam Clerk, is there anybody waiting to be heard in open form?
Not at the moment.
Okay, let's move on. And then we're going to move into executive session. Do I have a motion to move into executive session? Or round general law 4246-5, page two, session pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation. We have a motion. Second? Second?
Make the second section.
Okay, thank you. A potential litigation discussion by council vote on other action on all matters involving constant destruction corporation regarding North Smithfield Town Hall renovation. And number two, potential litigation discussion by council vote on other action on consideration of extraordinary litigation notice of violation, Mudgeon Family Trust 2017, Michael Long Mudgeon, subject property nine five victory highway North Smithfield, round possible zero zero one dash zero nine two. We have motion and second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. With that, we will now move into executive session.
Okay, just give me a second to...
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want you to know what... I'm here and so is Assistant Counsel Solicitor Stephen Archibald.
He's available with...
Yes, thank you, I'm here.
Okay. So, I just need to pause the recording.
Okay, now let's take a moment to provide an executive session, seal the minutes, and indicate that no votes were taken. We have a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Yep. Nobody has their camera. They're there.
Discussion by council vote on other action on payment of bills, is anyone, any bills, anyone willing to discuss? Second? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. Discussion by council vote on other action on consent agenda, all items in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, we remove the minutes from the seven sixteen and, I'm sorry, the one sixteen and the seven seven. Discussion by, alright, so discussion by, as a specific item, you remove from the consent agenda. You want me to write it down?
You have to make a motion approve with the stuff taken out and then go, yeah.
Okay.
It's easier if you don't mind.
No, but if you want.
Okay.
Okay. So, motion to approve the consent agenda, less the two items that were removed. So... Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. Now, in the session by council vote on other action on specific item, you remove from the consent agenda. Ms. Alves?
I can't hear. I can't hear.
Says request for a payment waiver, late payment charge penalty, pursuant to RIGL 44, that says the motion was made by this power second, by this one, only in the vote, and forty bill, to object, no delay.
I caught that, I got it, yeah, yep.
And then, in the minutes, number seven, was again, says transfer of funds in applied, from one budget, to two budget, motion made by this Biergard, second of the house. I made the motion, like, this is O'Hara, and Mr. Biergard, second. And, no, you, I hope you get it.
Okay.
And then, one more thing is, um, the next one down is forming an act committee, slight town resident power, and a town hall. Motion made by Mr. Biergard, second by Mr. Vadenay, for a dance, and a whole vote, she had this, if it was, instead of set up an art today with eight members, it should be set up a resolution for an act committee with eight members. And, one more thing, I'd just like to kind of add a little bit to this one for the, um, request to waive our district super assessment, you said that, um, Mr. Vadenay, um, amended his motion, can you just put in there that after discussion amongst the council, that I requested that we split the, um, the assessment fee, and then Mr. Vadenay amended his motion?
Mr. President, if I may, do you mind, someone make a motion to accept amendments for these minutes?
And approve them.
As, as discussed, yes.
You can approve the minutes.
And want to remove some of the, um, the items as amended. Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. Now, the whole business. Discussion by council vote on other action, I update the municipal WU task force, Vadenay, I don't know if it's specifically, have you, have you updated any updates?
You do apply, no, of data, and then what we discussed earlier, in executive session. You have a letter from, here, in the north one, you got some invoice number one eight zero one seven, that's three, December seventh of twenty twenty, from Secotions Associates. The service is rendered through November thirty of twenty twenty, you want nine hundred sixty dollars, it was a recommendation of the task force to prove it, make a motion that we approve it.
Okay, that's a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. Now, the business, especially my council vote on other action on appointing of the municipal court administrator. Uh, the current municipal court administrator is Chief Blackley. Is there a motion to reappoint?
Have we confirmed that they both want to be reappointed?
I believe we have. Madam Clerk? Yes.
I'll make a motion to reappoint, um, Chief Blackley as the municipal court administrator. Second, I hope you...
Session?
Just on the discussion, I know that, um, now Chief Blackley is recognized as the administrator, but he was doing it as a captain. He was the captain, and so I'm just wondering, is that a position that the chief really had, or it should be, to be someone else in the department? Just a, just a question, I don't, I don't have a problem if Chief Blackley wants to be doing it, but I'm just wondering if that's something that he should be doing.
Uh, well, he, he had, he had, more as a matter of protocol, being the chief of the department, it should be, should be in that position.
I personally don't have a problem, just, as a matter of protocol, should he be in that position?
Yeah, uh, I, I also don't have a problem, but he did indicate that he would be.
I can double check tomorrow if you want to continue this to the January fifth.
We, we, whatever, what you can do.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to withdraw my motion. Go ahead.
Did we, roll call that?
No, you didn't get that far.
Just for the record, say that the, I mean, I will withdraw and the second approved motion.
Okay, now we have discussion by council vote on other action on the municipal court clerk, and currently, she did indicate that she wants to be reappointed, and that is, how do you pronounce her first name?
Tafita.
Tafita Allen.
Make a motion, make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. Discussion by council vote on other action on Forestale Schoolhouse. Uh, we have a change order for the Architectural Preservation Group, and the change order is in the amount of four thousand one hundred twenty dollars, and it has been signed up by the Chair, Jeffrey Harris.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order, wanting to be the amount of four thousand one hundred twenty dollars from the Architectural Preservation Group, designed by Jeffrey Harris.
Any discussion?
Just on the discussion, understand that Jeff Harris, the town resident, he serves under the North Smithfield Heritage Association, he, he is an architect, and he's overseeing this in his role as that for the town. He has not, he has nothing to do with Architectural Preservation Group. He's, he's just overseeing this project for the town, which is, is part of his role with the Heritage Association, but he's well qualified, and so, I don't know. The people in the Heritage Association, their makeup, and their, their skill set, right over what you have on the task force.
Okay.
So, there's a few questions that come on that one, and we'll get ready.
Second, roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. Discussion by council vote on other action on resolutions establishing public advisory. Uh, last week, uh, last, at the last meeting, I presented this idea, and, uh, we asked if we also had to draw a resolution. Have the resolution up on the screen. All right, look like that. I purposely asked the solicitor to keep the resolution a little vague, since this is the Brandon Committee, that would do, see what direction it goes in. You know, we want to set up an act committee right now to put eye on the walls of the, uh, the town council, I mean, in the county, in the town council chambers and the town hall, uh, walls, but maybe that won't be the end of it. And, one of the thoughts that he did put in there, is the best interest of the town, that's the creative and private advisory committee, to develop and implement outward selection procedures, and organizational policies for the donation and loan of work to the town for display at the town hall municipal building, on town hall website, and in other public places and facilities. So, I asked him to leave it vague like that, so if, the committee can expand if that's where they end up on it. So, I would like to take a motion to approve the, uh, the resolution. We have a motion, we have a second, second, any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. Discussion by council vote on other action, uh, resolution, uh, made in question of Stone Drive, now, uh, if you, please, everybody, please go to the, this on your packet, there isn't a state on here. If you go to the third paragraph, it is hereby directed, that a notice there, uh, published in a newspaper of general circulation, in the town of Lincoln. So, we just have to, uh, change that, and then, or as, okay, we, we have to have another resolution, or can we make that change right now? If you do that?
You can make that change right now, this was presented by, I believe Mr. Bernstein is on, on the call, this was presented by Mr. Bernstein. So, I would just make, I would move to amend the resolution to substitute the town of Lincoln for the town of North Smithfield.
Okay.
And then after that motion is passed, I would make a second motion to pass the resol, pass the resolution as amended.
Okay.
Bernstein may be on the line.
Sorry, I was saying.
Okay.
Uh, so, I would like to take a motion to change the, the wording from town of Lincoln, in paragraph three, to town of North Smithfield. I think, I make, I make a motion that we, that we amend the resolution for abandoning a portion of Stone Drive, to remove the word Lincoln, and then replace it with the town of North Smithfield.
Can I, can I interrupt a second?
Yeah.
Uh, if you go to the second page, the meets and bounds.
You go again?
The second page of the meets and, it's called meets and bounds. The last, the second paragraph at the end, I don't know if that's an attempt at a smiley face or whatever, that should be straightened out as well.
That semi-colon thing?
Uh, is it a semi-colon and a dash, I don't know, it looks like somebody winking, I'm not quite sure.
He does it at the end of everyone, it's at the end of every paragraph.
So, we might as well, unless there's a reason, is there a reason, I'm not familiar with this punctuation.
I mean, I would, I would have think that Mr. Bernstein had copied this directly from the town records. That would be my guess. But, removing the, that, looks like there's a dash, is what you're talking about. Can't believe the dash has any, any legal importance. So, I would just, if you, I, I would just leave it to our discretion to move that, um, you know, if need be.
Okay, so...
I mean, Mr. Bernstein is not on the call. This is his resolution. But I'll check with him and see if that came out of the town records, or did, did that get, you know, inadvertently included, the dash, is what we're talking about, at the end of each paragraph.
So, what are you saying, it doesn't change it, meaning it doesn't?
I, I don't think it changes anything, I think you can remove the dashes if you want.
Well, sorry, we're going to remove.
All right.
So, the, we're going to amend the, so we'll actually amend, uh, remove the punctuation, or...
Yeah, if one of the person can add that, and then one is one.
Okay. All right, so we got a motion and a second for the, remove, the change in the town of Lincoln, to town of North Smithfield, page one, paragraph three. Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. And now, I'll entertain a motion to remove the punctuation at the end of each sentence on page two, to a proper semi-colon, without the dash. It's a motion. Second, we have a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. So, now we need a, another vote to approve this amendment. So, I'll obtain a motion to approve the, uh, resolution as amended. Session, any discussion, David, have you reviewed this?
Uh, yeah, it, I mean, it's provided by, um, Mr. Bernstein pursuant to state law, it's a requirement, um, the council already voted on it. So, I'm satisfied that it's satisfying the statutory requirements, that if we don't take the final action, the road's not abandoned.
And, are you okay with the meets and bounds description?
Yeah, as long as you, yeah, the meets and bounds description, it comes right out of, right out of the, uh, deed, I'm assuming, Mr. Bernstein, again, he's not on the line, so I, I can't question him on it, I'm assuming he just inadvertently included the dashes, so I'm satisfied.
Then, we have a, okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. This only needs your signature, right? Discussion by council vote on other action on supplemental bill, the dangers.
Hi, this supplemental tax bills came with the recommendation of this tax assistant tax assessor, Jennifer St. George. It's for two properties, one CO was, one was for Guy and Annette Boulay. CO issued on twelve, three twenty, tax amount was five hundred forty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. The other was for Brian Julie, I might be messing up this last name, Julie Cole. And that CO was issued on October twentieth of twenty twenty for eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and three cents, for a total of one thousand four hundred one dollars and sixty-four cents.
Motion to approve? Second? Session? You roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then, we'll move back to where we were at the beginning, so the special by council vote on other action on potential litigation on contract with Castle Corporation, you got to know, Smithfield Town Hall renovations, I'm going to take a line, you don't have to end this time. Okay, we'll move on. Especially by council vote on other action on potential litigation, on consideration of extraordinary, extraordinary litigation, notice of violation, Mudgeon Family Trust, two thousand seventeen, Michael Long Mudgeon, subject property, nine five victory highway, North Smithfield, round possible, zero zero one dash, zero nine two. So, what I'm looking for, I'll make two, there'll be two motions, first motion, then the, to go to is...
I want to make a motion that we proceed, that we proceed in, in file an action, so here we go. In consideration of his lack of following zoning limits.
Any further discussion on this? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. Now, I will entertain a motion to ask the solicitor to tip the case to be reformed, as a, as an extraordinary litigation, at a rate of, what the municipal rate is, is a hundred fifty dollars a hour, CBOC?
That's correct.
Authorize the CBOC to file petition in family court, and file the case in family court, and as be, as extraordinary litigation.
Superior court.
Superior court, I apologize, what did I say, this one?
No, you said family.
I thought I said family? We'll get the family court in. Sorry about that. So, that's a motion, we have a second. Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. Discussion by council vote on other action on North Smithfield High School demolition and replacement of windows, the dangers.
This came from the recommendation of Alan Seapy from the North Smithfield School Facilities Manager, he's recommending to use Danielson Glass and Mirror for the replacement of the windows at the high school, in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred and AA asbestos abatement company, for the demolition and abatement of the windows, in the amount of six thousand sixty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. That is a total of twenty-nine thousand, I'm sorry, twenty-eight thousand five sixty-eight sixty-four, this will be funded by Rhode Island Department of Education, SBA COVID-nineteen Capital Fund, that they were awarded in the amount of twenty-nine thousand four sixty-two. So, it will be fully funded.
The total total is twenty-two five, right?
No, the total total is, um, twenty-eight thousand five sixty-eight sixty-four.
Okay.
And the grant they received was, um, twenty-nine thousand four sixty-two, so, it would be a hundred percent, um, funded by the grant from the Rhode Island Department of Education.
We need to make two motions on this, since there are two vendors.
I would think we do. I'll make a motion that we award the Danielson Glass and Mirror, the contract to replace, with the replacement, in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Question? You roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
And also make a motion that we approve the AA asbestos abatement company, in the amount of six thousand sixty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents for the presence of A, for the replacement.
Session? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. Discussion by council, vote on other action on school bonds. Stephen Turner Incorporated, invoice number three, five, two. Stephen Turner Incorporated, invoice number three, three, nine, two. And Stephen Turner Incorporated, invoice number three, three, nine, three. SGB slash TPM, invoice nine, zero, zero, one, nine, one, two, six. See here, that is on the line, the school chair, school manager chair can already sign off on it, there's a rule. Do we have to do this on separate, there's four there? Okay, we're going to list them one at a time now. Okay, so the first one, we're looking at two hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-five cents to Stephen Turner.
Make a motion that we approve the invoice on Stephen Turner, dated seven, thirty-one, twenty, number thirty-two, fifty-two, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand twenty-five cents.
That's a motion.
Second.
The second, roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. Second one is also to Stephen Turner, invoice number three, three, nine, two, involved of one hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes. Third one is invoice number three, three, nine, three, involved of two thousand ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents. For the second? Second? Roll call.
Just, on the first question, just, just to bring, because we've got freedom tonight on this. The signatures that you're going to want to see, you're going to want to see Alan Seapy's signature on it, the, so he's managing this, and I want to see Bob Jervisini's signature on it. He's the, he's the, he's the person that the town hired to give you the, the private. If those people don't sign off, school board, you don't sign off on it, so, if we get it... So we get that they force it, or sign off on it. So the important signatures come actually before the school board sign off on it. Just a little, all aware of that.
Okay, roll call on that, uh, third one for, uh, $2,099.60.
Ms. Els?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes.
Mr. Bierger?
Yes. And finally, we have, uh,
Yes, SKV/DPM. I make a motion that we approve invoice number 9001926 from SKV/DPM in the amount of $130,000.
Second, discussion. So now this one is not signed by Robert.
This, this is Bob Jervisini's company. This is the company that we hired. And Bob Jervisini is actually the, the person that oversees it. But this is the company we hired to do our OPM on this. They've been overseeing this whole project from the elementary school to the, um, science labs, the locker rooms, um, the unit edge systems that were done. Now the window replacement, overseeing all the work that's been being done through design bill and through bidding with, you're being for the school projects. So this is his company. So obviously, yes, I know of him.
Okay, we have a motion to approve that one?
A motion and a second.
And we have a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Uh, roll call.
Ms. Els?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes.
Mr. Bierger?
Yes. Okay, before we adjourn, I just want to go to housekeeping. Uh, we, it is okay to discuss it because of the scheduling, you know, it's not in January to discuss it. We got it in scheduling for January and February. Should have mentioned that a little earlier. Um, I don't think you probably all know, Mr. Corvo is responsible for Ski Club where he takes about 100 kids up. There's only, we have, only have to change, I'm requesting that we change two meetings because, uh, it's four days, but it's really only two meetings, one in January and one in February because of, uh, we have holidays anyway. There are those two months, one in January and one in February. So we have to change the meeting date for it. So what I'm looking for for now is just to change the January fourth meeting to January fifth. Everybody's okay with that? And then we can, we can abstain and.
There, there a conflict with any other town boards?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay, just.
I, the chambers is open, if that is your question. The chambers is open, if that is your question.
I understand that, but it's like the planning board is open to a meeting.
I do not know.
You may not want to be meeting that. You may not want to be at the same time.
I have no idea.
If, Mr. President, true, in the past, council has had the, or other, we've had special meetings or other, uh, boards of divisions that met. So unless their agenda requires council involvement, it shouldn't be a problem. As a clerk said, this is open pretty much, so we should be all set.
Mm-hmm.
I apologize, I shouldn't mention it last week and last meeting and then, um, but anyway, so that's what we have today. So everybody's okay with that? Just deal with the January 5th right now and then we'll move to next meeting. Yes, we can do it right now. Well, that would be for February.
It would be.
February, eight, meeting would go to the February 9th, right?
No, the first and the second.
Oh, yeah, right. Is that, that's, that's right. So we change first and the second. So is everybody okay to change those two meeting dates?
Is this a present going forward that we change these on the special conference?
Uh, well, you know, I'm not thinking of it.
Ski Club, that's great.
It's not a good idea.
But if now, you know, one of us has a appointment or someone has a work day, you know, we kind of have to go around it and now we're changing the whole, um, town council schedule. I mean, it's a great, it's a great thing you're doing. I understand that, but I just don't know if it warrants changing the town council schedule.
I think it's minor. It's, it's just two meetings and it's worth, like I said, for the cause and you know, I've changed what, I've changed meetings for, in the past, so people, you don't have to change.
Well, absolutely.
Yeah, we've changed meeting for a day.
But usually that person.
It has happened, but I mean, that, four years ago, when I had changed meetings for people that were going to be away, they'd be back next day.
I, I think it's why we have some voluntary time. It's a club, kids enjoy. And, um, it's something they experience without. It's been a lot of. And I had surgery, we didn't change. I, I went down, it was one day, I had a three month. And, uh, both times, we used surgery, so.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that, President. I mean, it's not when you have the, it's bowling night, you know, and they have the championship game right in front of their faces. It's a legitimate cause. It doesn't mean we have to approve anytime someone wants to change the date for whatever reason. Every, every, every instance will be brought up and discussed individually. Please.
Mr. President, oh, I think no, we're arguing, it's, it's for a real good cause, but, uh, if it, if it comes down to a vote, depending what's on the agenda, to have a two-two deadlock and nothing would be accomplished, so. I, I just wanted all of that of a consideration. That's something you may want to consider. I, I agree that it's a wonderful thing, so I just wanted to make sure that that's.
But in the past, we changed meetings.
We have.
David, you there? David, do you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
Is this something that we have to vote on or?
I, I mean, if there's, if there's, if there's not agreement, I would just vote on it. It's, again, it's a, it's a scheduling matter. It's not a, an item. So if you want to take a vote on it because there's question where people stand, I, I couldn't hear the conversation if people have in disagreement.
I don't know. Well, no, I don't know if you can disagree on that. I don't know what position. But you were just asking questions about that precedent.
Okay. You, again, if, if there's no objection, I think you can, you can reschedule the meeting. You cancel a meeting and you schedule a special meeting for the next day.
Roll call to, uh, I'm going to roll to what we scheduled to be. Those two dates.
Do I need a second on that?
I'm going to ask you a second.
Oh, okay.
Do we have a second? All right, roll, roll call.
Ms. Els?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadeney?
I'm going to run this on the agenda. I asked, I asked the circle of that and because.
It's just a scheduling matter. It's just a scheduling matter. You could have a discussion about scheduling.
Actually, you could just do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm opposed to them just.
I, I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you, but you.
I, I checked the solicitor. He discussed it. He said he could, so I'm trying to, uh, put it out there for people who voice their opinion and make more. Where do we go?
Yes, okay, Mr. Bierger?
Yes.
Okay.
Before we adjourn. I'm sure everyone's read the papers. State has passed a $4.9 billion budget. They have funded most programs. I would ask the administrator with the finance director, if you can go through and see how that shakes out with town of North Smithfield. Then we can look back and go back and look at the budgets.
Sort of being, sort of being discussed. We're already, we're already discussing it. Some of the other things we have to execute.
Then we'll, then we'll know what we, what we can go back and back, if we, if we put on hold, what we can go forward with, because there's considerable amount of stuff that we kind of even, so. Thank you.
Then we have the council to either put it back into that department or not put it back. I'm sorry about the council. We will give you all the information you need. We will provide all the information you need.
Thank you again, Mr. Council. Thank you.
Okay, we'll contend a motion to adjourn. For a second? Roll call.
Wish all a Merry Christmas, Mr. President, members of the council. Madam, Madam Clerk and Mr. Administrator.
You too, David. Merry Christmas.